At this time, I'd like to call this March 12th Regular Council Meeting to order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all of those who passed away in the month of March. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all. Roll call, please. Here.
Mr. Sabatini. Mr. Pezzeta.
Here.
Ms. Collin?
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Trunell?
Here.
Mr. Plansky?
Here.
Mr. De Giuseppe?
Here. At this time, we have a presentation by Mrs. Trunell for a young man who we're all proud of in Bristol Borough. Is John Joseph Doyle here?
My son's father.
If your family wants to come up or anybody, you're welcome to.
Mom, dad. Grandma, grandpa.
Where's your dad?
Baseball.
Sports.
I had a miss.
How are you?
Just setting up here. We're a little behind the end. And before I get started, normally, I just come up here and I speak and, you know, we kind of honor the people that are doing outstanding jobs in town. But in this particular instance, I actually wrote. I was so afraid of missing something because this young man has done so much that's certainly noteworthy. And so, as a result, I've kind of written up what I think that we should all acknowledge about this great young man. John Joseph Doyle wrote an essay, not really that unusual for a man in high school. But the reason for the essay and the result of the essay are the purpose for him and his proud family being here tonight. John Doyle is the oldest of the three sons of John and Sharon Doyle. He has a passion, not just for sports, he participates in, but for the school he attends and the entire sports program. John saw a need in the workout rooms and locker rooms at the high school. And while others just saw the problem, John saw a solution and quickly went about obtaining it. PowerAid and ESPN offered scholarships to students who wrote essays entitled, "Rise Up For Your School." And indeed, he did. John's essay won him a second-tier prize in the nationwide contest, and his heartfelt essay earned $2,500, which is being used to upgrade the athletic facility. To quote John Doyle, "With the district's funds restricted, pretty soon, we may not have any sports left. But with the grant from PowerAid, we can build a positive investment to us kids and bring the school and the community together." Powerful words from a man with a passion for self-improvement and a drive for excellence. John, you want to come up here too? And you stand back there. His dad just came in. John is a member of the cross-country team, and his coach, Jim Esposito, says of him, John is a wonderful addition with his drive and determination, making him a leader on the team. Besides running 5K courses, John is a lifeguard at Sesame Place and a Bristol High School baseball pitcher and infielder. He is a student council member, participates in the Italian club, and the Model UN. John is a member of Interact, one of the most significant and fastest-growing service clubs of the Rotary International, which develops leadership and integrity. John Joseph Doyle is an exceptional young man, and not only a source of pride to his parents, but a source of pride for Bristol Borough. Thank you, John, from this council, the mayor, and the residents of this town that you make so proud, for all you've personally done to make this a better community. And I know you have a bright and promising future ahead. Thank you so much. So, this young man wrote an essay. It was such an excellent essay that he won a $2,500 grant, and it was a nationwide event. And he contributed the money to a school to upgrade a facility. So, it's quite remarkable. And as a result, this council has a plaque which states, commending Bristol High School student John Joseph Doyle Jr. for his contest-winning essay, "Rise Up For Your School," which earned Bristol High School $2,500 towards athletic facility upgrades. This is signed by council president and the mayor of Bristol. And it is just presented by Borough Council, March 12, 2012. Here's to you, John.
Now, you get a chance to say what you want to use it for. I just wanted to use it for the locker rooms and, like, the weight room because it's not that great of a job.
Good job.
Good job, dude.
Good job.
I'm going to open up public participation. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything, please go to the podium. Anybody on this side of the room would like to speak on anything?
Go ahead, podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You all know who I am, Joe Nelson, from the East Ward. I'm a regular here at the council meetings for the past five years. I try to make them all. Unfortunately, I missed last month's agenda meeting because of a death in the family. I had to wake that night. But I specifically wanted to just to talk to you tonight about the project going on at the NovaCare Center. I know there's a lot of negotiations going on back and forth. We don't know which way it's going to go, whether to buy, or lease, or lend lease, whatever. I would just like to see this project move forward. You know, although I'm here in attendance just about every month, I only talk when I think it's something very important, especially important to the people of the East Ward. This is a project that's very important to the people of the East Ward, even though I'm spending too much time in the wah-wah at the corner. But we've got to move these projects forward, and I think this is an excellent opportunity. We finally got rid of that old factory. We got rid of that ugly Quonset hut. And we have an opportunity to address the entire area, paved parking, landscaping. And as a gateway coming into Bristol, with the people coming in from Ratcliffe, North Ratcliffe Street, I think it's important we give a good impression. We finally get this cleaned up, get it landscaped properly, and we can continue down Faragut Avenue, as Mr. Pezzeta's talked about numerous times with the businesses along there. We have the new Borough Pub coming in that's being completely rejuvenated in the old Charlie Carp's Pub, and I understand it's supposed to be beautiful. We can keep this moving forward. It's progress, and that's what this town needs, is progress. So, we're going to be adding tax ratables, and you all know I'm a very big fan of raising tax ratables. So, we have to put individual prejudice or biases aside and do what's best for the borough. And that's what I ask myself when I support or, you know, defend any project. Number one question is, is it good for Bristol Borough? Second question is, is it good for the East Ward? If the answer is yes to both of those, my individual prejudice and biases go by the wayside, and I got to come here and speak on behalf of those projects. And you all know I've supported many of the projects we brought forth. And looking at the progress down at the new public works facility is just absolutely phenomenal. The entire town is talking about it as they drive by. So, a job well done on this council's behalf on that. And please move this project forward. I consider it a personal favor. Thank you.
Mike? 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 One minute. Anybody else on public participation that would like to speak on anything? Okay, that ends public participation.
I wanted to just say that I have some bias and prejudice. Should I? Should I? I'm sorry. Mr. De Giuseppe and I are arguing. No, I simply want to make a comment to Joe Nelson's comments that this council never takes into effect bias or prejudice of any kind. We are about good government, so I just wouldn't want anyone in the public to believe that there was any prejudice or bias in any decisions that this council ever makes, so. Mike wants to have something to say now.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to, it's an honor to have in our presence this evening, our Congressman, Mike Fitzpatrick, who would like to say a few words to Borough Council and the residents that are watching at home.
Mr. Council President, thank you. May it please the council. I appreciate the opportunity to stop by. As the President said, my name is Mike Fitzpatrick. It's my honor to represent Bristol Borough in the United States Congress as part of the 112th Congress. And I want to second some of the comments that Mr. Nelson just expressed. This town looks great. It really does. The improvements that I've seen over the last several years, as I drive into town and proudly come into Bristol Borough, I think the town looks wonderful. A lot of improvements, and still, you know, certainly, much work to occur. And so, I would be remiss if I didn't also comment on young, is it John Doyle, the student that just appeared here? You know, we've got some tough times. We've got tough times in our country, we have tough times in our community, and to see a young student, you know, concerned about his school, going above and beyond, you know, that's the sort of thing I think we need to, that's what we need to be reading about in the paper, the great kids, the good things that they're doing, and re-instill confidence in the future of our communities and the future of our country. So, as we begin the second session, we in Washington, the second session of the 112th Congress, I just wanted to stop by to let you know that I'm looking forward this year to continuing to work on issues of mutual concern between your great borough and I as your representative. I'm sure there are plenty of opportunities we're going to have to work together on projects. I do want to say thank you to the council and to the town for permitting I and my staff to come here to your Borough building and to meet with Borough residents from time to time. I know that we're down here, I think, a couple of times a month, and you make your facilities available. So, Ralph, I want to say, you know, thank you for making that opportunity available to us. One of the reasons I wanted to stop down today is recently completed construction of a new public works facility here in Bristol. And I know it was, it was a significant project. It's, as I stopped by, it's a beautiful building. I want to congratulate you on it. It was funded in part with federal funds, and so I see it as my responsibility when federal funds are utilized. And I think it's a great thing to see them utilized in our communities, putting people to work, beautifying the borough, and providing a safe place for your public works and other authority municipal employees' place to work. I want to see the dollars are being well spent, and so I got the opportunity to see the building. I want to congratulate you on its recognition, and I'm sure that it will be here for many, many decades, serving well, not just the public work staff, but the residents of the borough as well. Last fall, I had the opportunity to stop by and speak with your Borough manager, Mr. Dillon, during the time of flooding. And it seems like we had probably more than our share of floods over the course of the last couple of years, including last fall. One of the items that Mr. Dillon brought to my attention is the need for better early detection, better communication between the federal agencies, NOAA, the Weather Service, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and, you know, the great emergency management folks that you have working here in the borough of Bristol. There are many ways to improve communication. One is through stream gauges that are effective, that are well-placed, and that you can rely on in order to determine not just what the tides are going to be as they come up the river, but the amount and capacity and velocity of the water coming down the river. Because when the tide is coming up and the water's coming down, if they converge in this tidal area of Bristol Borough, you know, it's going to be water, you know, backing up into the canal, backing up into Otter Creek, and ultimately backing up into your parking area, into the wharf area, and into some of your industrial areas as well, which is part of the reason you needed the new public works building. So, I, about two weeks ago, in the nation's capital, I met with the Army Corps of Engineers. I specifically spoke to them about the challenges that we face here in Bristol Borough with early detection and warning systems. And I have a commitment from both the Army Corps of Engineers and the NRCS, the Resource Conservation Service, which is a division of the Department of Agriculture, where they're the ones actually responsible for placing the storm and stream gauges, to make certain that the gauges that we have are working correctly, and if additional resources are needed in Bristol Borough, that those resources are deployed so that you have the early warning systems and that you can warn your residents at a time of emergency. Those are some of the issues that I'm working on, you know, with the borough and mutual cooperation down in the nation's capital. But I'm sure there may be other issues that are just as important to you. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to stop by, answer any questions you have, and, you know, make certain that your voices are being heard in Washington, because that's my job, to listen to you first and then to speak on your behalf down in the House of Representatives. So, to the President, you know, thanks for the opportunity to stop by. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are, take any comments, or suggestions, or criticisms, if there are.
Well, I know, as long as I know you, Mike, you've always been a friend of Bristol Borough. No matter what this town needed, as a county commissioner and as a congressman, when we got on the phone with you, you responded. You came here, you met with residents in Bristol Borough, so there's nothing that I can say that, you know, or any Borough resident can say that you're not accessible to them or available to them. And by coming here every month, meeting with Bristol Borough residents, shows how much you're concerned about the people of this town. So, as far as I'm concerned, you're a true Bristolian.
I appreciate that. 24/7, I'm available. Anytime, you know, live right down the road, anytime you need me, I will be here. But it's a...
A lot of people get elected and forget where they came from. You got elected, and you kept your roots here, and that means a lot to everybody.
You'll make sure of that, I'm sure.
That's right.
Okay. Thanks for letting me stop by.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, number two.
I'd like to add an addendum to Ms. Trunell's addendum, so that everybody in the viewing audience and everybody here knows, I never accused of any member of this council, either as an individual or as a group, of using prejudice or bias in decision-making. I told you, and I told, you know, it's on tape, that I put my personal prejudice and bias aside and look at the facts. So, I didn't accuse anybody here of previous bias or prejudice or decision-making. I made a statement about myself. That was it. So, I just wanted to get that on record. Thank you.
Earl? Participation.
I'd like to thank the Congressman personally. He made my day when he's talking about the gauges that are going to get back in service on the river. USGS is known throughout the United States, and they're the ones that take care of these gauges. And for whatever reason, they started taking gauges out, and they weren't contacting the people in the areas that they had to servicing. So, one day, we found out by an error on the computer that our gauge over here at Burlington was taken away. So, we've been trying to do everything we can to get it back, because on the river, there's nothing now between Trenton and the Taconi-Palmira Bridge, which is a pretty long stretch on the river. So, if we can get this gauge back in operation, it could be a great benefit to us and give us information that we normally can't get.
Well, I know you're the guy that gets the phone calls, Earl, so I'm sure you're happy. Before we get into number two on the agenda, I just want to make an announcement that there will be a council meeting on Monday, March 26, at 7:00 PM, to discuss the pension funds in Borough Hall with representatives from Stiefel Nicholas. Okay, number two on the agenda.
President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 13, February 27, and March 5. I'd like to accept the treasurer's report for January, accept the police and DJ's report for February, accept the fire chief's report for February, accept Borough Inspector's report for February, and accept the HARB report for February 27.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Trunell. Any questions or comments?
I actually have a question, and it's pertaining to the police report. Obviously, we're all concerned about keeping an eye on the budget as we move through the year, and I'm just trying to get a handle on a few things. So, I just have a couple of questions. I think there's probably pretty reasonable answers to them. I just want to just ask a few questions. Under the heading, on page six, under the heading of "Money Collected From Meters," I noticed that last year, the borough collected $100,000, so an average of $8,300 a month or so. I'm guessing this is seasonal, so I'm just trying to really kind of gauge. So, so far this year, we averaged just about under $6,000 a month. So, if that trend were to continue, we would be about $24,000 in the hole compared to last year. So, I guess my question is, is that more of a seasonal thing, those types of tickets?
A parking enforcement officer was out for a number of weeks in February.
Yeah, okay. So, I guess as the weather gets nicer, it's usually kind of a regular occurrence. Okay. And then, my next question is on page seven, in regard to overtime, and it appears to be good news for us. And if I'm reading it correctly, in 2011, we spent $197,000 in police overtime, which is about an average of $16,000 a month. And it's seemingly good news that this year, we're averaging about $14,000 per month. But again, I guess my question is, is overtime usually a seasonal thing? Will we catch up to that number?
Overtime sometimes means that our officers are working hard in the field of narcotics, because a lot of that is reimbursed.
Right.
So, you judge on that, that basis is kind of skewed.
Okay. So, it's just kind of luck of the draw, basically? Okay. Those are my only questions. Thanks.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to adopt an ordinance establishing a four-way stop intersectional Canal End Road at Maple Beach Road.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize sending a letter to Pennsylvania Governor Tom Corbett opposing section of Act 13, which states that local zoning hearing boards have no jurisdiction over where drilling may take place in municipalities.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment about this motion. I have concerns. Governor Corbett has already passed the law, so I understand where Greg has concerns about, you know, the section of the law and the jurisdiction over municipality, but it's kind of a mute point. The law's been passed, and I guess my concern would be to take an adversarial stance with the governor's office. Lieutenant Governor Colley's been very, very good to Bristol Borough. Everything that we've gotten in terms of, and Mike Fitzpatrick alluded to the Public Works Department, everything, every penny that we've ever gotten has been because of relationships, good relationships, that have been formed with different, the powers that be. So, I don't support this at all. It's already done. Us sending a letter after the fact to discuss our displeasure with it doesn't help us in any way, and I think maybe antagonizes the governor's office, and perhaps we're going to need the governor if something happens. So, I personally would be opposed to passing this.
If I may respond to that, just, I certainly understand what your point is, but, you know, as a local government, you know, I think it's our responsibility to go on record of something that we disagree with. If you don't disagree with it, certainly, you know, obviously, you're entitled to vote the way that you feel. But I think it's our duty to go on record with things like this, because you don't know how these laws could change. You don't know, you know, who might come into power or office at a different time. And I think it's good that we're on record, so if this is reexamined, and they look at other local jurisdictions that say the same thing, there may be a groundswell of people that say, "We don't agree with this." So, yes, in the time and place, I think you're right. I don't think it's going to have any effect in changing Governor Corbett's mind. But I do think that in the future, where people look at this and they see local jurisdictions say, "This is not a good idea," because God forbid someone finds natural gas in my backyard or yours, you know, I would like to at least be on record so that when another administration or another group comes in, that they know that the people of Bristol Borough are against that. So, I respect your comments, certainly, but that is certainly my logic in proposing it.
Hey, son, and I agree with Robin in the fact that Jim Colley is the lieutenant governor, and Corbett, they've been very good to Bristol, and I don't think we should send a letter saying that we're opposed to what they're doing, and then next week, send them a letter saying, "This is the same Bristol Borough that's looking for a million dollars to help us with a road program." And I understand where you're coming from.
I understand.
But it's very unlikely that somebody's going to drill in Bristol Borough for gas in our backyards. And I don't think we're going to change it anyway. So, I just think, why send a letter to put Bristol Borough's name out there, and Colley or Corbett or somebody takes offense to it and says, "Okay, when these people want something, remember the letter they sent." That's my opinion, so.
I understand. I disagree, but I understand.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. Marry, roll call vote.
Mr. Devine?
What do you think about it? Uh... weighing it out here in a second. What, now, now that you've proposed your concerns, I feel, you know, I feel a little bit different about it. Will it have that much of a negative effect as you move up?
But you have to ask yourself, will it have a positive effect? The law has been passed.
I can tell you have to ask yourself too.
Look, I think we've got a motion.
We have to just vote, unfortunately.
Why? You can't vote now?
No, we shouldn't discuss that at the work session. Sorry.
Then I'm going to abstain from voting. Can I do that?
Do anything you want.
That's what I'll do, abstain from voting. I don't have enough information.
Mr. Sabatini?
Yes.
Ms. Colin?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Trunell?
No.
Mr. Plansky?
No.
Mr. De Giuseppe?
No.
It's defeated for two. Two abstentions.
Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the borough solicitor to draft an ordinance prohibiting the use of interior furniture outside of a structure.
A second. Second by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments? Mr. Sabatini?
I would like to comment that number five, this that Mr. Pezzeta brought up, is real good legislation for, I think, me and Mr. Devine, especially with having a major artery that comes through our town, having constant complaints. So, I'm hoping that everybody is in favor of this, because it would benefit a lot of police calls, and it would benefit a lot of constituent complaints that will be happening come spring. So, I think this is good legislation.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I mean, I also agree. I think this is definitely a good ordinance that can help us. But what I'm afraid of is that we begin to make ordinances for everything. That's what I'm afraid of. I don't want to turn us into a gated community. You know, if there's something that is, you know, negative towards, you know, in Bristol Borough and our community, in our wards, I just want to make sure we don't go overboard and start, you know, putting ordinances and different things in place where you can't do anything. So, I mean, on that note, but I do understand, and I think it is, you know, a good ordinance to follow, but...
And I agree with that. I do not want to over-legislate or over, or create too many ordinances. This is just really good.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I agree with Tony. I think my issue, and if anybody looked at my voting history, I am one who doesn't like to over-govern. I think the least amount of governing we can do, the better off citizens are to live their lives as they see fit. And unfortunately, everybody doesn't meet my standards, but, so I agree with Tony. I'm afraid of too much legislation from a youth and occupancy department. So, that's just my comment.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I agree with Robin and Tony also, but we just have to watch how people take this. We have to watch how we confront people. Some people aren't as fortunate enough to have the nice things that they could put on their porch. But at the same time, it's sad when, you know, they have all this abundance of furniture on their porch, for whatever reason. It might be trash, and they'll never put it out for trash. I don't like what they do with their homes and their property, but I think it's, in the end, it's a good thing, because we do need to get a grip on how some people keep their properties.
Any other comments or questions or concerns? I, before we vote on this, I think that, I know this isn't something that's covered under our ordinance, but I think it is an inspection issue that if there's couches on the front porch that are beat up or soaked or, you know, things like that, we can force them, I'm almost sure, Mr. Solana, to remove them, or no?
If, you know, I think if any condition presents any kind of health hazard or tripping hazard or something, under the current maintenance code, the inspector can do something. But specifically... is in favor of this, because it would benefit a lot of police calls, it would benefit a lot of constituent complaints that will be happening come spring. So I think this is good legislation.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I mean, I also, I think this is definitely a good ordinance that can help us, but what I'm afraid of is that we begin to make ordinances for everything. That's what I'm afraid of. I don't want to turn us into a gated community. You know, if there's something that is negative towards, in Bristol Borough and our community, in our wards, I just want to make sure we don't go overboard and start putting ordinances and different things in place where you can't do anything. So, I mean, on that note, but I do understand, and I think it is a good ordinance to follow, but.
And I agree with that. I do not want to over-legislate or create too many ordinances, this is just related to this.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I agree with Tony. I think my issue, and if anybody looked at my voting history, I am one who doesn't like to over-govern. I think the least amount of governing we can do, the better off citizens are to live their lives as they see fit, and unfortunately, everybody doesn't meet my standards, but so I agree with Tony. I'm afraid of too much legislation from a use and occupancy department, so that's just my comment.
Ms. Rodriguez.
I agree with Robin and Tony also, but we just have to watch how people take this, we have to watch how we confront people. Some people aren't as fortunate enough to have the nice things that they could put on their porch, but at the same time, it's sad when they have all this abundance of furniture on their porch, for whatever reason, it might be trash, and they'll never put it out for trash. I don't like what they do with their homes and their property, but I think it's, in the end, it's a good thing, because we do need to get a grip on how some people keep their properties.
Any other comments or questions or concerns? Before we vote on this, I think that, I know this isn't something that's covered under our ordinance, but I think it is an inspection issue that if there's couches on the front porch that are beat up or soaked or things like that, we can force them, I'm almost sure, Mr. Solana, to remove them, or no?
If, you know, I think if any condition presents any kind of health hazard or tripping hazard or something, under the current maintenance code, the inspector can do something, but specifically, and I did ask the inspector to review this, there's nothing specifically in any of the current codes that would cover this, so specifically.
So this is, this ordinance, all we're voting for tonight is to get an ordinance written. This isn't passed.
No.
Can you explain to council what Mr. Pezzeta wants to do?
I'm being authorized to draft it. Next month, you're going to look at it. If you agree with it, then you're going to advertise, vote to advertise.
Right, so we're not passing it tonight, we're just voting to draft it.
Correct.
Okay. Do we need a roll call vote?
And are we going to vote again later on it?
Yes.
When you have the.
The ordinance itself.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, or you want to? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
No.
Number six.
Mr. President, based on the circumstances of a few, now, if someone disagrees, that's fine, but based on the circumstances of the last few days, where I believe that we have worked out some discrepancies in the license agreement that we were willing to offer to Mr. Mizaki, and that I think that we now as council are clear on what that license agreement looks like, and I also think Mr. Mizaki is now clear on it and a little more comfortable with it. As long as we are all clear, I am willing to withdraw the motion of the appraisal, under the understanding that there will be no language in the license agreement which states that it could be terminated in 30 days. So I'm willing to withdraw that motion altogether.
We don't need a motion or nothing, right? So you're withdrawing the motion, and just to go on record, the project was approved last month with the agreement. So the project was approved, and Mr. Mizaki can move forward with this project.
Right, thank you.
Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion not to proceed with the Gateway Project along Old Route 13 due to Conrell requirements.
I'd ask that this be tabled. We've reached out to the Delaware River Basin, not the Delaware River Planning Commission to see if we can use these funds, as Mr. Sabatini had brought up, and the fellow's on vacation till the middle of this week, so if we could just table it for a month, and we should. I'd like to make a motion to table this, and with that, a comment afterwards.
Motion on the floor to table. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Number eight.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the start of the 2012 street sweeper season to start April 12th.
Second. Second by Mr. Sabatini. Any questions or comments?
Yes, we have a two-week, two-week window where no one gets tickets at that time.
Two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks.
Yes.
Depending on if the weather stays nice, if it's cold, then we may give them an extra week or so, but we give notices, so everybody will be aware of what's going on. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion designating April, May, and June as cleanup, paint-up, fix-up months. Permit fees will be waived for residential exterior improvements.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. For ten.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to ratify change order number 17 in the amount of $8,585. That's additional. Number 18, $6,357. That's additional. Number 19, $1,598 as a deduction for the public works facility that's getting close to being done.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Trunell. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The 85-85, the number 17 change order, that is for, what is that, an air conditioning/heating unit?
It's what it's doing, which we said Monday night when we were here. It's taken one heating system that was going to do all the office areas and the bathrooms and locker rooms. We're putting another system in that does just the office. The second system will do the lunch room, the bathrooms and locker rooms, so when the guys are at work all day, and if George is in the office, we don't need to heat or cool this entire building.
What was the, how much did it cost us, the first system, when we got the first number? How much of a difference?
Original bid, Tony, I don't know.
Oh, you don't know?
I don't think it's broken down into how much heat was.
The reason why, I know that we're under budget, I mean, we.
Well, we're not, we're close to being even right now.
Okay, well, what I want to do is, I want to make sure that all these additional change orders, we don't continue to grow, and by the time that we're finished.
We are. I said that to council.
We are what?
We're going to go over budget, because we don't have the flooring in there, we might want to do a generator on the building.
Okay, so.
If you look, in your pocket, there's a change order.
Right, I looked at it.
The running total.
Right.
So after these change orders tells you exactly what the total is. So if you look at that total versus the contract price, it tells you where we are, but there's still a lot of outstanding things that need to be done.
Right, so we're going to go, what I'm saying is, we're going to go over what we budget, I'm saying.
If we choose to put these things in, we don't have to, but we're talking about an emergency generator, which could be, I said a few months ago, maybe $40,000.
Right, when does that come in? Because that's another one.
Well, we're waiting for these to come in to us.
Okay.
Questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
I get a, anybody have anything on their new business, old business, mayor?
No, I just have some things I want to discuss with the chief after the meeting.
Okay. Anybody? I got a motion to adjourn.